Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Um. We don't have a flag salute on here, are we? Not doing that today?
Well, if someone would like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add a flag salute, I'm happy to.
Okay, so let's approve, let's start off by approving the agenda for today.
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
Okay, motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, motion passed. Team building. Who is? In charge of team building?
So, team building was one that I pulled from our, our last agenda and we kind of, I can't recall exactly what we did last year, I think we shared, sorry. But I didn't know if we, we didn't have it locked for the agenda and we had a long time today to, to chat. So I didn't know if we wanted to throw something in impromptu team building, so I just put it mostly as a placeholder if we wanted to do some.
Does anybody have a little exercise they'd like to do?
Did we do two truths and a lie last year?
No, we did where we interviewed each other.
Oh, that's right.
We like, and then we told the other person's story.
Two truths and a lie, I like that.
Yeah, and then people gotta pick out which one's the lie.
Yeah.
You have to do cool things though, to like tell the truth about that could be a lie.
I'm gonna be good. Everything's gonna be the truth, it'll be hard to figure out. You've got cool stuff there.
Arnie would be like, I hiked through the Amazon and.
Well, why don't we start, Arnie? Two truths and a lie.
Okay, um. Went up north to the, um, Northwoods Territory from Canada. Spent a really nice time, the Aurora Brows was really big, so, um, stayed up late and watched that. Um, went to, um. Croatia with a group of people looking at teaching democracy in a new country and spent the time having a great dinner with the Supreme Court Chief Justice of Croatia. Had an opportunity to, um, spend an evening in Alaska at a conference and who should show up but. Donna Brizel, so, um, I went over because my wife and the other people were saying, with, with, said, gosh, have you signed an ice? And it was this crowded little area, so I just walked over to her and said, oh, Donna Brizel, we've been watching you on TV and we'd love to have you come have dinner. While we're here, so she came over and went shopping with the women, the, with the native jewelry up in Alaska. Uh, that's it.
Are all those true? Politician. Like, like that. Yeah, I had to think about that, that's a little scary.
I'm gonna say the first one.
Was the lie?
Was the lie.
I'm gonna say the first one too, it has all these details.
I think the Croatia one.
Oh, that's hard.
Look, the Croatia one was the first one, right?
No.
Oh, I'm going with Croatia too.
I worked with an attorney who went to Montenegro to help them set up their.
That's pretty cool.
Their legal system.
And we got to watch kids and they did it in English, uh, mock trial.
Yeah.
Or maybe you just go, yeah, Bill, just, they had their, what, the answer was the first one.
It had to do with, yeah, seeing, seeing the Aurora Brows. The only time I seen it was when I was up in Washington about a month ago.
Oh, wow.
It showed up, but it was supposed to be the greatest night and it was so cold and I had to get a taxi because you had to get out of the city, there was a light. I just decided, no, I'm too tired. But it is cool up there. It's a neat place up there. The, the interlamp, almost as far north as you in a while.
Alright, Addie, do you have any?
No, I'm trying to think of mine. Are you ready?
What about you, David?
No, I can't think of those.
Okay, congratulations on the grandbaby, by the way, David.
Thank you.
Oh, so precious.
I think two.
Two, oh, well, I just didn't know about the other one, I know it's coming, but I haven't heard of him.
They're both boys.
Boys.
One's, uh, five months now and the other one's, uh, two months. So, yeah, we were babysitting down the, through their lives. We were babysitting, I, we, we used to, my wife and I took each a half day Mondays and Tuesdays, so that was, uh, but, I was just really like figuring out, alright. Alright, so it's, it's not complicated.
Yes.
It's, 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 uh, hungry, right? Cause they're tired or, or they're discomfort, it's a discomfort. And the solution, uh, not that, is holding them, but, but.
Yeah, for most of them, it is.
Yeah.
You've got a truth for a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in profit, seems to be true, Arnie.
Exactly.
My grandbaby right now is learning, you know, how to talk and it's so cute, you forget, cause it's so much time and so her thing right now is no, 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 no. I'm like, it's just so cute and then you just wanna hear him say, oh, no.
She's close to a year, right?
She's gonna be a year next month, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, very cute.
It's crazy watching all these kids that you grew up with become adults.
Ah, wild. And she feel really old.
Told my wife, I said, what has happened to our kids, my, my daughter especially, she's like, oh, grown up, I mean, I'm like, what the heck?
Tell me about it. My son's gonna be forty this year.
I look at the decision that I made in her age, I look, I'm like.
The first time I scanned someone's ID when I was in human resources and it said, you're two thousand, you're not old enough to work, and I was like, oh, it's twenty eighteen. You've been working for two years now. That really felt old then.
Alright, I've got, I've got some.
Okay, you've got some?
Yeah. Okay. I have seven children with six different fathers. One is my brother. One, I don't even know who the father is. That's one. Um. Two, no, I can't do it. Um. Yeah. Fred happened to do it at the college and I was like, you said what? They're all staff, it was like, yeah, we played two truths, lie, and I just said it, I was like, no, that reflects on me too, don't do that. Um. I was a long distance runner in college. And I loved it. But then. I'm a, I'm a recovered long distance runner, I haven't, I haven't done long distance in a while and number three. Um. I'm going to Mexico today.
Today?
And I'm going with the lie, the long distance. Just because I know you've adopted and I know it's very possible for all of that, so I'm going with long distance. I'm gonna say you hate running, actually.
I would say that, that, I mean, I, 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 you couldn't be lying about the exact details of number one, that, and I would not necessarily know that. That, that is true. Uh, and I, I hope we're going to Mexico. Although it could be fricking hot, I guess we left that once in August and they were like, it was fair, so if you go, I hope they're air conditioning. But I'm guessing you are not a particular fan of running as well.
I actually love running.
No.
Oh, but I didn't run in college, I ran in high school. And I actually still run. Oh, you do? Yeah, so that's, that was a whole course of life. But yes, I, I did adopt my children and I did get custody of, of my brother's child and then one of them, I know they're biological father and then the other one, we don't, I don't want to bother it. But it, boy, people can judge when you introduce yourself like that, they're like, whoa, where are you from, Spain? I'm on the school board.
I am a school board. Almost good.
Every school in the district.
Hey, where are you going?
Cancun.
Today, you really are.
Yeah, I gotta be at airport by five, when I heard we were gonna get out of here early, I was, oh, that's so good.
And that completely in that order? Oh, that was, that was when he didn't think there was gonna be, uh, this activity.
Oh.
That's fun, we were in Belize in the, in the spring, which is not that.
Oh, yeah.
It was, it was, but it was, uh, the, the, the high was eighty-five and the low was eighty, so.
Sure, it's gonna be miserable.
Same old.
Yes. I'm not good at this, so you guys are gonna have to skip me.
I, I guess I'll try and then you guys can see, so, um, uh, so let's see, the first one, I went to, uh, MIT, I voted school and, uh, in college, in high school, I had played, uh, in the band and it was really a big deal to play football games. So I went to MIT, I thought, well, I'll go and join the band. Well, football was not a big deal there, so they had a kazoo band, so I don't have like a kazoo, you know, we were the marching kazoo band, that's, that's story number one. Story number two, um, I, uh, moved to El Paso, actually from, uh, Oregon and we traveled through Arizona, we were staying with some friends and we, uh, found a little rattlesnake, not that big. And we raised it and kept it for about ten years and I'm living here, men are sloppy.
No way.
Story number two. Story number three, also an MIT story, I was an aeronautical engineer and, uh, I was behind in one of my projects, I was not up to speed. So I forced my advisor's name on my back, I turned it, I got caught and, uh, and I got in trouble.
You're not, no.
So.
No, I'm going with two, coffee is not real, although I think it would be, I'm going with two.
You're going number three.
I'm gonna go number three.
I'll go three.
Yeah, I'm gonna do three too, cause we, we picked up a box turtle driving across the country, went and kept it for years, so.
The lie was number one.
What? You're like, I'm not good at this, hold on.
Now, MIT did have a kazoo band. But I never did fly in a kazoo band.
Oh, God. Wow, I have so much more stuff for you. Oh, my God, that is so good.
I've been in leadership for a while, so you have to learn how to do that.
Like, either a politician, a lawyer, yeah. Or a sociopath. Anyone. I like it. Can you think of anything, Addie?
Yeah, I'm thinking, I've got two, but I've just gotta think of one more.
Think of that lie.
Oh, um. Just, just, yeah, yeah, I know, we're good. You're not the first person, um. I graduated from Marshville High School in the mid nineties. Mister Arnie Roblin was my principal at that time. I, that's, that's one, two, I met a, a beautiful girl from Alaska in college. Uh, we dated in college and then, uh, got married afterwards, came back to Marshville High School and then after about ten years, she was ready to go back to Alaska and go home with her parents. Three, moved from Alaska to Kusby this summer, drove the Alcan and everything was perfect and smooth. The entire move, everything has just been seamless the entire time.
Okay, I can tell.
That's a neat new one, isn't it ironic? Cause I almost think no one, just smooth, yeah.
Thanks for giving us a, an easy one there, so I take it there was, everything went wrong, it's Murphy's law?
No, it actually has been, it's been pretty smooth, but, yeah, I mean, relative, I mean, there's been things, obviously there, we just got a house, which is nice.
Oh, God.
But there's still things in boxes, like I can't find any socks. I told Seth this morning, like, can you just go buy me some socks, I cannot. But I don't think they've been washed for a week. Yeah.
I love that.
So we're still, yeah, still unpacking and, and transitioning, but it's, it's been pretty smooth.
Yeah, that's gotta be a, yeah.
Yeah.
How are the kids adjusting, how are they feeling about being here?
Pretty good, yeah.
Yeah.
And well, we would come back, you know, we'd come back every summer, right, and see family and so they know the area and they know lots of people and they're, and they're really close with their cousins.
Good.
So they just ingratiated themselves in that group and then they've been around their friends, they're, they're fine, they're excited for school to start. Yeah.
And did your.
The wife's the harder.
She's like her family, yeah, being in a car in San Francisco and then flight to LA.
I know, I'm hoping this, this, this flight goes to, back to Portland.
Yep.
So we can get her back to Anchorage, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't complain, it really has, it's been really smooth considering, yeah.
And now, do either of your, do the kiddos play fall sports, I know your daughter does basketball, but do they do?
They all play basketball, yeah, I would say that's their primary sport, um, the youngest boy I think is gonna play football, I don't know about my middle son, then my daughter's gonna do track in, in the spring.
In the spring?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the football's almost started.
It is, like next week or something, isn't it?
And he's in seventh grade, so it started a little, little later. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, where are your girls going?
Well, there's a, there's a, gonna be a junior, she's gonna be, so she's sixteen and then a freshman and then a seventh grader, so yeah, they're all two years, two years apart, yeah.
And the junior was spying with me in Alaska, I mean, that's gotta be a tough age.
Yeah, she, I mean, she, she, we didn't leave because we're unhappy, I mean, there's still friends there and family and, but she's, you know, she's been, it's interesting, I think I was telling Arnie this. Through sports, they, especially in Alaska, they travel so much, she's been all over the country and, you know, when you're on these travel teams and you're in different environments, different schools, different gyms and cities and teams every year. She's a pretty flexible kid, right? So, yeah, yeah, but still, you know, there's, she, they're, they're going back, they're going back next week to Alaska, so looking forward to the, the, the post-game, the post-game emotional part. Yeah.
So what? Position in basketball, she's a.
Point guard.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Nice, did she participate this summer at all in some of the summer balls?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we got, yeah, so they, they, uh, in Alaska, they finished school in May, mid-May, you know, and they, and they started this week, right, so they get out early and start earlier, so as soon as school is out. We sent our two oldest, Morgan and Jackson, here and then, then we stayed and our, our third son, Lincoln, he's like, what, what kind of deal is this? I'm stuck with you two. Like. He'll never let's forget it, he's like, what is happening here? I'm just doing, I'm the ambassador. He still reminds us.
Well, I'm glad to hear everybody's adjusting well and, and that they're feeling comfortable and at home, that's nice, I'm here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, transition, yeah. I'm glad you found.
You look like you have them, Addie.
Okay, I have three quick ones.
Alright.
Totally unrelated little facts, I've been married for fifty-two years. I, um, what was my second one going to be? I was, um, on the fencing team at San Jose State. And, um, I rode with the Hells Angels.
Gosh, I can't believe all of these. Oh, my gosh.
I'm going three.
Oh. Gosh, there's a lie in there, huh? Fifty-two years, that's a long time to live.
That one's clearly okay. Must be, cause that's, that's a short time.
How long have you been married, Arnie?
Fifty-six. I, I would say you're not on the fencing, I mean, I guess.
That's where you're going, huh?
Fifty-two years. Where the first one.
Yeah, it is, it's, I was only married forty-six. I was on the fencing team and I did ride, but the hell.
It's gotta be.
We had a, I worked for a criminal attorney and we represented the Hells Angels, the Wheel Lords and the Unforgiven Sinners in California. And I was very helpful to the president of the Hells Angels while he was in prison. Um, his, his old lady was my roommate, um, and so I took care of his family and did their will and did some corporate stuff for them. So to pay me back, he took me on the back of his motorcycle with all the rest of the club. And we rode up to some party in, in Redwood City, California, where we just pulled in and they said, they walked around and said to anyone, don't touch her, she's with us.
Look at you. Learned so much here.
I know, Diane, you're gonna have to work on yours.
Nothing interesting, I'm serious, I'm, I'm pretty boring.
Okay. Now that we all know way too much about each other, um, let's move on to superintendent.
Alright.
Which gets us off.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Dave in transition here, the slide deck, so I was thinking, uh, this is the second time I've been in the building this summer and I went to school here, right? Long time ago and every time I'm here, the playground, I have memories, the file folders open, cause I, I was a fast kid and so I'd always get challenged. Here for races, so I don't know, I don't think they have anymore, but they had, they had a vertical racetrack and we would, and I'd often get challenged and then we could at that time. You know, we could be, we were, we could be physical in elementary school back in the, the late eighties, right, so playing basketball, we'd play tackle football. We had the red dodgeballs and there used to be a, a swing where you could hang on, I mean, it was like out of medieval, right? And you would, and you would get, the goal was to get other kids horizontal, right? So everybody, you guys remember that? And you would hang on and you'd run as fast as you could and you'd get some poor kid who was the smallest kid and then you'd launch him, you know? Unfortunately, we actually hurt somebody and they broke their leg and that was it, but, yeah, different, different.
It's always fun until someone gets hurt.
Right. So, yeah, the blossom gold file folder opens up when I come here. So, um, my presentation, I just, it's, it's long, I've got a lot to cover. Been looking forward to sitting down with you guys, since I've been here, I would say, you know, I've just been, I'm learning as much as possible, right? Now, I have a little bit of an advantage because I'm, you know, I'm from here, but I've been gone for a long time, right? So I know enough of the history and I've been kind of following you guys from afar, um, and then you guys have done some really good things, right? It was one of the reasons I was interested in the job, I, I think there's a lot of positive momentum here. Um, and good things happening, there are some things that, that we need to fix pretty quickly, um, and so I've spent a lot of time just looking at data and working with teams. I would say, you know, uh, two things, I'm, I'm either meeting, uh, new people in the community that I've never met and their, their, um, organization that's new or just, which has been great, so those partnerships. Or there's people I've known for a long time and they're just coming to say hi, which has been really cool. And then just working really closely with our cabinet team, making sure that, that we're aligned and then, and then working closely with principals has, has been taken up most, most of my work. So this first slide, not a decision to make, um, in my feedback cycle, I'd gotten some feedback about the mission statement. I came up with this one, um, it's a, it's a, it's an iteration from Highline Public Schools outside of Seattle. What I like about this statement is it's sometimes mission statements can get nebulous, right? Like what, what does that mean? I think sometimes you gotta go point to something that's a little bit concrete, so each student is known by name, strength and need. Strength is really important to me, because sometimes we get vocal with kids, we can, we can perseverate on what they don't do well, right? And we need to know what, we need to know what the needs are and we need to know what the constraints are, we need to help fix those, but every kid has strengths. It's our job to find out what are those strengths and leverage those. No, it's. Because to have those three options, you have to be really grounded at the elementary level, you'll hear me say solid four, four ceiling, well, they've gotta have those academic, that foundation of reading, writing, math, SCL skills. So we have all three of those options, so David and I actually played around with this all summer and, uh, we had a couple others, but they were copyrights, so. No, we don't wanna go down that road, so we kept playing around with the nautical thing and, um, yeah, this is, this is where we landed and I ran into the principals and they were, they were, they were super receptive. And I've talked to the principals and cabinet about the mission and, and I've got good feedback.
Yeah, if you wanna be sure you don't have an original thought, just check the copyrights and you'll find, everything under the sun is copyrighted for something.
Yeah. So the three words, these are three fancy words, um, SAT words that are, that are woven through my presentation, you're gonna hear me say this a lot throughout the year. Alignment, we've gotta get aligned, right now we're not aligned as a system. Expectations have to increase, we have to expect more from kids and adults, our kids can do more and all, when we say all, we mean all, we don't mean some kids, those kids, that, that demographic, we mean all kids. And it's not, it's not, we meet their, their expectations and exceed the expectations, right? Like, we've gotta change what, and that's one of the things that I'll get into this, that I'm finding, um, so a lot of strengths, I don't think our expectations are high enough. For what kids can do. And that starts with adults. So we have two books, I can appeal, pass these down that we're reading as an administrative team, cabinet, principals, the first one is The Energy Bus and that's John Gordon and it's, that one focuses on culture and team. Making sure you, you know, talks a lot about, um, just being positive at work and, and being, not being an energy vampire, right, and being an energy giver. The other one is one of my favorite books, it, it sits in my office, I have it at home, I have it marked up, highlighted and Getting It Done is about, what I like about this book, I think it's thirty stories. About either rural or urban schools who have exceeded expectations with kids who come from low income and, and really generational poverty. And urban kids who are living in sometimes gang infested drug infested areas and, and rural areas, to be honest, somewhat like our community. And each of these districts and schools in their own way, there isn't a, right, there isn't a carbon copy, but in their own way, um, exceed expectations. And, and large numbers of kids are graduating, going to college, going to the military, going into the workforce, large numbers of kids in aggregate are reading at proficiency, math proficiency. So I think it's a good case study for, for our leadership, because we have in that book. We have parallels that we can point to, oh, that, that town in Oklahoma is like us, that town in West Virginia is like us, that town in Washington is like our community and sometimes people can look at things and go, well, they're, they're, they're different than us, right? And so, um, we're, we'll spend some time reading that book as a leadership team. There's lots of good information, this is one of the excerpts from the book, I love the last sentence. Excellent, excellence in teaching and learning is the top priority to which all the purposes are subordinate. That is our core mission, teaching and learn, that is, I call it, you protect the core. Teaching and learning is our core mission, now, there are other things that branch off of that core mission, right? Extracurricular activities, athletics, facilities, budget management, there's a lot of things, but that's, that's the core mission and the goal for me is to get people to focus on it. Sometimes we can get distracted, right? Teaching and learning is the core mission, protect the core, so my agenda is broken up into three, three areas, what I've learned, what I've been doing, what's next. So what I, what I need first, um, and we can talk about this at the end, and I know we don't need to make decisions here, but I need some feedback on the mission statement. Um, we need, we need targets aligned to goals, I talked to Arnie and Addie about this at the conference, we have really good goals, you guys have a, you have, you have a great strategic plan. But what we need from you is we need, we need targets, when you say you want every kid to graduate, I need the targets to shoot to with, with my team. I need, they'll say, hey, we're at eighty percent, our goal by next year is to be to ninety percent and the next year is to be at ninety-five percent, and we need that feedback from you guys. And the next year is to be at ninety-five percent. And we need that feedback from you guys. Um, and then we need systems of accountability. I have some ideas to create that. I think part of your guys' job is to make sure we're on track and, and keep us focused. Right? And so we have those systems of accountability and then we can create the strategic actions. So I want to do that with my leadership teams and teacher leaders. Like what are the strategic actions that align the goal line and report on this? So anchors. I think it's important as we get to know each other. Um, some of my anchors, this is what guides my work. All students deserve great teachers in schools by design, not chance. There's a science to building schools. It's not, it's not by luck. It really isn't by luck. There's, there's very strategic and concrete things you can do. In schools and districts to improve student outcomes, right? And so creating a culture where it's. Well, Addie, Addie's got a great teacher. And it was by luck. And Arnie, mm, right? Like, we've got to get out of this teacher lottery system. You can design great teachers in schools through, through a plan and a system. Students who need the most deserve the best. We, we have a lot of those students. You guys are fully aware, right? We have a lot of vulnerable students from, from, from tough, tough circumstances. Right? We, we're the answer. Classroom should look like hallways. Classroom should look like hallways. When I walk down Marshfield High School and I look into an advanced placement class, I should see our students. For example, fifteen percent of our students are Latino, then fifteen percent of our advanced placement demographics should be Latino. There should be proportionality. And I've been, I worked in four high schools and it's not always been the case. I've looked in advanced placement, I don't see our students. I see a certain demographic of kids. And I'll get in detail, not later. Um, smartest person in the room is the room, right? It takes a team to do this work. It's complicated, it's hard, it's challenging. Nobody needs to be an expert in everything. I'm not an expert in everything. I have my areas, but it takes a lot of smart people, a lot of committed people and experts to figure this out. The gift of high expectations is the greatest gift we can give our students. They will rise to our challenge. The kids are easy. They really are. They're, they'll, they'll write, if you believe in them, they know that if you believe in them, they will rise. To the expectation, they will rise to the bar. All of us have those stories, probably some of us in here can reflect back on our education. It's the gift of high expectations, though obviously it's die expectations with the support. Right? It's not, I'm gonna throw you in the deep end of the pool and without floating. It's, I believe you can do this, right? And this is how we can do it. We're gonna support you, we're gonna have, we're gonna have patience. To change things, you have to change things. And change his heart. And change his heart. So it's really important that we're aligned. And I'm aligned with the principals and they're aligned with our staffs. And I don't, I know, I know that's hard, but. If we're, if we're gonna improve outcomes for our kids. And give them more access and more equity, we have to change some things. Okay, so again, what, what I've learned, uh, here's some positive, I call them glows and, glows and grows. Glows and grows. So this is what my assessment is. I think we have really good people here.
But it's F O V.
Science of reading, yeah. Um, and the science of reading is got, uh, those, science of reading, MTSS, Avid. All have really good momentum. Like, I mean, we're, we're becoming, and science of reading is a, is a national thing. We did some really good work in Mississippi. We can talk about that later. But those are the glows, facilities. I mean, you guys have done amazing work with the bonds. I mean, our schools are beautiful schools, right? And we have a couple that still need some support and help. They, they should probably be the next phase. Uh, but we have beautiful facilities. Um, our on-track graduation is ninety-one percent. It's higher than the state average. That's awesome. Um, our, we'll get into some of the data, our K-two literacy growth. We're moving the needle in K-two with reading. Now, they're coming in very, they're coming in behind, but the needle's getting moved. Our activities are. State recognized, right? When you think of Marshville High School, you think of athletics. Now. That's gonna be one of our challenges. We have to change that culture. It's athletics and academics. It's, it's both. In fact, there's a, there's research on the correlations pretty high. And when you're good in both, you're. You have better outcomes. Community, community engagement is outstanding. I forgot. How invested? People in this community are in the, are in the district. And former people, former coaches and teachers and administrators are still tied. And that is, that's a, that's a difference between here and Alaska. It's not that people in Alaska don't care, they do care. But I think the. I think the nuance is in Alaska, everybody's from somewhere else. If you meet ten people, they're from Texas, Oregon, Minnesota, New York, and California. They're from all over. They didn't go to school there. It's, they didn't go to the local high school. And so when people retire, they, they tend to. They, they're snowbirds or they go do their hobbies. They're not as tied into the, the district and schools. So those are what I think are, are strengths as a school district. Here's where I'm seeing growths. Challenges. I said facilities. It's also a constraint. David's heard me say this ad nauseam. My first month, I started to keep track of how many conversations I had about facilities. It was seventy-five percent of my conversation. Was facilities. It wasn't reading, it wasn't writing, it wasn't math, it wasn't graduation, it wasn't access, it wasn't equity. It was facilities. We have to shift the narrative off of facilities. We've got to get to academics and learning. And so that's a cultural thing. And I think sometimes facilities are easy to point to because I can, we can paint that, we can fix that, we can walk away. Learning and math takes, takes a while, right, to fix those things. Systems are not aligned. And CIA is curriculum instruction assessment. They're not aligned. We've got to get aligned in our systems. Madison and Eastside, similar, identical. We don't have different math curriculums and reading curriculums and MTSS, discipline, like they, they need, we need to have a system. Our early release Fridays need a complete reboot. And we're in the process of increasing expectations and outcomes for early release Fridays. Principals are on board. And lots and, and been talking to the union, they're on board. So like, yep, we need these expectations on early release Friday. Think we're being disingenuous with our community. We don't, because we told the community we're doing that to, to improve teaching. And to improve learning. And I'm not sure that's happening yet. So we got to fix that. Literacy obviously is the foundation. If kids are not proficient in reading, then science, history. Math, it's all gonna be a challenge at the next level. Attendance is a, is a challenge writ large. And we were at the school board conference and it was. Really peppered in all over the place. Everybody's dealing with the attendance challenge. Ninth grade readiness is a challenge. We do not have enough kids ready for Algebra I. And ninth grade. And Algebra I is kind of the gatekeeping course for higher level. Right? We gotta get more kids grounded in Algebra I. On-time graduation, what, sixty-nine percent? Far below the state average. And then again, expectations. We've got to increase expectations of what kids can do. So data. Brutal facts. So for, for us to move forwards. We have to look at the brutal facts. And, and some of these slides have already gone through. We have to own them and then we have to get the solution. But you can't ignore them. You can't, you can't just hide from them or you don't know what to fix. Right? If you don't look at these things, you don't know what the target is and you don't even know if you're on track. Right? So the old, the old adage, measure what you treasure. So I'll go through some of these pretty quickly. Um, this is the Oregon at a glance district profile. You can see our regular attendance is fifty-four percent. That's, that's missing just one class per month. The state average is sixty-two. Our grade three language arts proficiency is twenty-nine percent. Oregon averages forty. Mathematics in eighth grade is fifteen percent proficiency. The state average is twenty-six. Positive below, our on-track graduation is ninety-one percent. That, what that means is ninety-one percent of our freshmen. Have gotten one-fourth of their high school credits. That's a, that's a really important metric. Because here's what the research demonstrates. If you pass all your classes as freshmen, you're gonna graduate. For every F you get, every class you fail as a freshman, there's a ten percent reduction on-time graduation. Right? So we get two, we have an eighty percent chance of graduating. That's a positive. On-time graduation is uh, sixty-nine. So there's, something's happening between that sophomore and senior year. And then five-year completion is seventy-three percent. Now, say, footnote, Oregon's data is not great.
When I look at this, that's what I, I'm like, even compared to Oregon, I'm like.
The state collectively is struggling.
Yeah.
Right? But I think, like Huz Bay, when I listened to the stakeholders, when I, when I went to Posta at the University of Oregon. And I went to this state school board, here's what I'm really inspired by. People are having the right conversations. They're talking about the right things. They're looking at the right data, they're trying to create the right systems. But yeah, currently, right now, Oregon's not setting the educational landscape on fire, right? Advanced placement performance. So I think this is really a proxy for aspect, expectations. I think when you have a, a robust advanced placement program, placement starts to trickle down through your culture. It actually trickles into K-12 because you end up having a no start. So our data, the first one, AP exams taken. Marshfield High School, nine percent of our students take AP exam. Nationally, it's thirty-five percent. Nationally, thirty-five percent of high school students take one AP exam. Us, it's nine. State is twenty-two percent. State of Oregon. Exams passed at Marshfield High School, two percent. Of our students passing the exam. Nationally, it's twenty-two and in the state, it's fifteen. Lot, there's lots of, lots of work to do there. At one point, there was, Marshfield had a pretty strong advanced placement book. Over the years. Um, I have my own hypotheses on that. We've talked about it offline, but. Yeah. AP exams, we offer four courses.
Is that a teaching issue?
Yes. What, what, what do you mean?
Not poor performance on tests and everything.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a cultural issue. I think it's, 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 it's teaching. I think it's all of us, right? It's just having those expectations. I think the course, the exams taken, you know. Our kids are not coming into high school with strong academic skills, right? So I think it's a K-12 piece. Arnie, you were gonna say something.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's a combination of those things. And it's a. I think there's an emphasis on the kids that go on AP, we assume they're gonna be successful. As opposed to, how do I get those other kids who could do well if they have the right instruction and they're good? How do we encourage kids who should be taking those courses to get into the course? Instead of discouraging them.
You're not that, you're not that smart. Get out of that class.
And how do you, and how do you, and how do you?
Yeah.
How do you support kids once they make the decision to stay there? Those are things we haven't done very well. And even, and we worked on it. And different people did it differently. So we would get. Pretty close to classroom hallway in our AP English. But never in our AP history. And partially, that was the teacher who it was that had the expectations. Uh, and it goes back to, what are your expectations of kids? Can they do it?
Yeah.
Uh, and can you give them information in a way that allows them to be successful when they take the test?
What are we compared to North Bend? Do you have, do you have any?
That's the, yeah, actually that was on my, I haven't looked yet. I do plan on doing a little bit competitive, right? We want them to do well, we just want to do a little better. We're rooting for them. I haven't gotten to their, their college board. Uh, results yet, but I, I plan on.
Do you think this is influenced all by um, the dual credit track too? I mean, I, I don't know.
That has affected it.
Yeah, because I mean, other, I don't know if other parts of the nation and state have that same.
Yeah.
And I know a lot of my kids, that was, there's nobody to take AP because you have a dual credit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's. In, in that.
Yeah, I think that's a factor. I think you can do both and, and both models have their pros and cons, right? The nice thing about AP is it's more portable. You can take it, more universities accept it because it's a nationally standardized exam. Right? So it's almost universally accepted. Uh, the dual college is more of a local thing, more of a, a state. There's probably some, some alignment with Oregon and Washington. And, and I, I think there's a place for dual college enrollment. I think you can do both, right? So if I had more time, I would, the dual college, it's just harder to get the data. Because college board is really good about providing your data, but.
I think the more AP you have and the more kids are in it and, because of the national ranking. It. Makes kids more confident about going to school wherever they go.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I agree those. It sort of locks you into state schools and all that more. Directly because it's.
I mean, it's really good. Great. And it saves money and our state has really pushed that as a state.
Yeah.
Um, but the. Training of teachers by the college board. Is pretty remarkable. And they get to go and sit with other teachers all around the country and it's a good thing. We used to send a lot of, keep all of our teachers to those kinds of meals. And then many of our teachers were greater, so they went back to the rating of them. All of that stuff helps institutionalize the whole. Idea of, of the AP stuff. But it's um. It, I think it is a mental kind of.
Yeah.
State that can be really helpful.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I can. I, I mean, I clearly can see that having this. There's a, there's a vision that would help.
Yeah, yeah, I've got that.
I mean, I would be curious because of the dual credit. Percentage wise, like a lot of kids seem to go in state. It is more affordable than it is. And then at that point, like in the beginning of high school, do you start guiding people who know maybe they are in state or. At least have that interest in the AP route versus the dual. Like individualized.
Thinking that doesn't transfer from the dual credit.
Right.
Well, if you were going to a, if you're going to some other university somewhere else, other state, they may or may not accept your dual credit. But an AP has a sort of national.
Private schools don't always take it either in a local.
Even if it's. From an accredited college?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Because not always like, it's just like swap, not always. If you do your credits at swap and then you decide you're gonna go to California. If. They may not honor that same.
Yeah, the universities are in a position to try to judge the quality of that.
Right.
That, and see how it compares to something they offer. And so the APs, I mean, they all, they all know more clearly, but. These other things, they, the discernment about what the value is, what the value.
It's been, one of the things that's been the most unique to me is that. We keep trying to figure out ways to assess kids and get better information at universities. They, they will still tell you that the number one best indicator is the GPA.
Yeah.
Which is really weird. I mean, we don't think that it's necessarily the best, but the reality is, the reality is. That has a better indicator of how you're gonna do in college than just about anything else. And back in the fifties and sixties, when I first came in seventies. Um, you can get in with a lower GPA from Marshfield to the University of Oregon than most other schools. Because our kids outperformed the GPA stuff, because we had. Hard teachers, scapegoat grades. And so, and they know, I mean, the universities look at schools.
Yeah.
They know what's going on.
AP exam also is a good preparation because it's very similar. If you're gonna go that route, to taking your bar exam or taking your medical. All those things require that sort of sitting down. I mean, it's, it's a bear.
Yeah.
But the preparation of that bear is good, because that's, that's a professional standard in a lot of, a lot of the practice.
Yeah. Yeah, a hundred percent. This is perfect, because I was hoping that we could get into a little Socratic. It's, it's going through this. Now it'll, it's gonna take us more time, but I'm, I'm glad you guys are, are weighing in. And I think everything you said is right. Diane, to me, it's, it's AP and dual college. I think you can do both. Arnie's right, um, it's access. You have to be careful. You don't want to focus on the score. The score is icing.
Right.
What you can't, what's really hard to measure is the kid who goes into the course and you said it. And I don't think I'm that kid, but I'm in there now and I'm watching all these other students who are high performing. Oh, that's how you take notes. That's how you have an academic discussion. That's how you do your homework. Now that, that level starts to ride, rise. I didn't get a three. But I got a two and that kid might have learned more than the kid who, who walked in with a four. And it changes their perception of what they can do academically.
And two is a high school, a good grade for a high school.
Yeah.
I mean, a, a high school class would have got you to a two. So you didn't lose anything by taking AP.
Well, and the grades waited.
Exactly.
It actually boosts your GPA.
And you've. Learned a different way of.
We have, we've never waited AP.
Oh, we don't? Oh, we're gonna have to change. That's an incentive for kids, right?
So when you say AP and dual credit, sorry, I have to wrap my brain around this. Are you saying and, and then it's like one class or and, and then like, oh, they're taking an AP class and they're.
They can do both.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes they can be in the same place.
Yeah, I, you know, it'd be nice if, if, if we could work with the, the local community colleges and, and just say, hey, if a kid gets an AP. And uh, three on the AP exam, can you count that as? Can you count that as a credit?
Yeah.
That's dual college credit. AP is easier to scale. Because it doesn't require the teacher to have a master's degree in the subject. So your husband has a master's in history, right? Most of our high school teachers have a master's in curriculum instruction. It's, it's education. It's not a domain. It's not a subject. So we can get, you can teach AP biology. We'll give you the training. You can teach AP world history, AP stats. You don't have to have a master's. So it's easier to scale faster than the dual college.
Right.
But I, Diane, I think you can do both.
And then, yeah, like, you've worked really well with our former. History teacher, I think her name's Sandra. And then, um, but then. It just fell off here. But North Bend, who, I mean, they will pump them out. AP and, and they. But North Bend, who, I mean, they would pump them out AP and, and they just. He would just go over their curriculum and then they'd get, yeah, the college credit without. You know, taking his classes or anything. He was like, that isn't good. But then no, no one from here ever went back.
Yeah.
To do that. Well, they're not really interested at, at Marshville.
We'll have to fix that. So five year exam, I'll put this one pretty quickly. Five year AP exams taken. Little longitudinal data, you can see AP biology. There was two years there where they didn't. Nobody took the exam. I don't know what happened with environmental science. There were twenty five exams in twenty twenty three and zero the previous years. AP psychology has the highest number and then again, very few in AP history.
Is there no calculus or does that not have AP? We had none?
No, we don't have AP calculus.
At all. Oh, without a doubt.
Any one of them. We don't have one. There's, there's AP, um, there's pre calculus. There's AP calculus AB and there's AP calculus BC, right? Um, my own daughter, putting my parent hat on, she had taken AP pre calculus, AP calculus AB. And when I went to enroll her, they didn't have any. So I had my superintendent hat on, but I didn't put my parent, my parent hat on with my super. Right, but there's a very high performing student and she's not the only one in our, in our district. Uh, nationally, I think about twenty percent of students are enrolled. Yeah, and we have a very low.
Very, it's getting one of those things where it is a sort of. Thing that also built, you know, you have that at that level, it also filters down in terms of the expectation.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. And math has been the struggle at Paris.
Yeah, yeah, I have some ideas, but um, yeah, twenty percent, people will say, I just talked about this in Alaska and then. Well, are you implying everybody should be in calculus? No, no, we're not. But there is a certain demographic of kids that should be in calculus because they're gonna be our engineers.
Also an AP statistics and um.
Yeah.
Whatever, which we've never had.
Yeah.
Well, my daughter took calculus and she does nails, so.
My, my daughter picked calculus.
Figure, you know.
Took calculus at Marshall High School and we didn't have AP and she went and took her just exams at USC and they said, oh, you don't have to take anymore math. Which is exactly what she appointed because she had a major, a arts major and she didn't really wanna take anymore math.
Yeah.
So they taught it well, but it's just.
I, I just, I, I think it is one of those things where.
But I agree.
That, that, you know, you can't predict the future value of it, but I mean, I think going through that process. That academically honed you in a way that has value across the spectrum regardless of actually what it is.
The people who have the hardest time going to universities or the people that don't take math in their senior year. But it gets you ready. I mean, it's.
Or languages.
Well, I think too, you know, it creates those disciplines around learning new tasks and those things which are invaluable. And no matter how bright you are, usually in math, there will come a limit at some point. Yeah. Oh my God, I have to study for this one.
Oh, yeah.
For the first time, I really have to study.
Well, there's a discipline.
And we have, I don't know. The kiddos, I've heard a lot from kiddos, Tammy Montiel is an amazing, amazing math teacher. Like, she's an incredible math teacher, so. I think the more kids we can get in that direction and in her class.
Yeah.
I think it's what, uh, to me is reflective of what, that's inside of the data is that we have the kids coming in. I mean. Getting them ready at free algebra, I mean, that early is, is really key. But then there's a, it sounds like there's also this fall off from ninth grade to, to high school, which is, you know, a lot of times where that. Curriculum development happens too, so I think we've got work at both of those ends, right?
When I was a, a math teacher, Mr. Edman, the other math teacher, and I, we both taught geometry.
Mm-hmm.
And geometry was the biggest fall off.
Yeah.
All of math. I mean, going in, we had a pretty even matched male, female. Geometry, all of a sudden it was seventy, eighty percent male and female. So we made that our objective and we, by the time we got done in four years, there were fifty fifty, female, male and geometry is fifty fifty. Um, and it stayed for a long time. Tammy Montiel came through that group, um, but it was. Constant. I mean, and who did we have the biggest problem with? Calling parents and saying, don't tell your daughter you didn't do geometry.
Yeah.
Tell her, of course you should be able to.
Or I can't do math, right?
Or I can't do math. I mean, it was kinda like this.
Yeah, or I took algebra and I've never used it in my entire life.
And they use that again.
Yeah.
But yes, it was, um, it's a, it, you have to work at it all the time constantly, but it's not. The easiest subject nor the one that has the most glamour, but it's one that really does prepare you.
So can I ask you here? So I, I look at this and I say, what are we doing right in AP psychology that we're not doing right than the others? When I look at this, I say, we, we think that we do something right in AP psychology.
See, and I look at that and say, oh, do we have a new teacher in those classes that really brought the kids in?
There looks like there's something that could be, but I also look like that's been a consistent performer to some degree.
Yes.
I think, I think that kids. Psychology is something that in their minds is something they wanna get engaged in.
Yeah.
And that they don't have any under, understanding that it's too hard for them. Some of these other classes, uh, AP biology, uh, it's kinda hard. Biology is hard in the first place.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, environmental science, that's a weird one. Um, and you know, this history. I, I think it's expectations and understandings and I think that obviously AP made them feel more comfortable coming there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, Addie, it's probably, I don't know who teaches it yet, but I think it's probably a teacher who.
Yeah.
You can do this. I'm gonna help you. I wanna support you. I think it's what Arnie said a little bit. When you look at AP, the AP world. We call them soft entry points, right? So if you take social sciences. The soft entry point for your history is AP hem geography. That's where you wanna start. Get them in there as a freshman, sophomore. It's not AP US. Scaffold them to AP US, AP world, right? And the sciences, it's AP environmental. Get them in there as freshmen and sophomores. Build the skill, build the competence, right? And language arts, it's AP comp versus AP lit. It's AP seminal. Get them in there, get their confidence and then you can start to scaffold to AP literature and math. It's interesting, AP stats is probably the best entry point into math, but typically. They take stats their junior, senior year, but you were AP computer science. That principles has one of the highest pass rates in the country. If you think about AP computer science, the two fastest growing. Occupations fields are computer science and healthcare, right? And if you pass that exam, which has the highest pass rate, that is a state school, that's thirteen hundred dollar scholarship. Private school, that could be a five thousand dollar scholarship, right? Now, part of the challenge, if you have a gender gap in computer science. I talked to Mr. Montiel, the principal at Marshall High, junior high, and he's like, we need to have AP computer science. He's like, I have, I have eighth graders who do great in AP computer science. So I, I think, I think it's probably a teacher expectation, teacher climate. Here's our mean scores. Longitudinal.
And that AP biology means you don't have enough for a right kid. That's too high of a score for an average.
Yeah. Yeah, you have to be careful focusing too much on the student's access. Okay, we started to talk about this secondary mathematics, something we call the leak in the STEM pipeline. Right? Mathematics is a proxy for high wage, high demand careers. It doesn't mean everybody's gonna take calculus. But if you look nationally, sixty percent of students take Algebra II. Ten percent of our kids take Algebra II. Some states require Algebra II as graduation.
Right.
Um, nationally, twenty percent calculus. Now that could be pre calculus, calc AV, calc BC, college calculus. There's lots of. Iterations, four percent of our kids. We have twenty percent of our kids in this community who should be taking calculus. They're just as capable. Our kids, that's it. Our kids are just as capable. Do they need a little extra help? Yep. Do they need a little extra support? Yep. Do we have to be better teachers and leaders? Yep. But twenty percent of our kids, they're, our kids are no different than anybody else's kids. They just have some other challenges. Um, and Algebra I, this is a big one for me. Eight percent of our eighth graders take Algebra I. Nationally, it's twenty four percent. And here's the benefit to Algebra I in eighth grade. The math ceiling gets really high. So math is very sequential, right? I take Algebra I, I take geometry, I take Algebra II, I take pre calculus. If, if I'm a high achieving eighth grader and I'm ready for Algebra I, I take it as a, uh, eighth grader. Now I go, my, my freshman year, I take geometry. My sophomore year, I'm taking eight Algebra II. Now I could take calculus, AV, like my, here's my point, my math ceiling gets really high. Right? So in our district, we had, our goal was fifty percent of eighth graders. My previous district in Algebra I by, I think they said twenty twenty seven, we were thirty percent. So my, my daughter took Algebra I as a sixth grader. Cause she was ready. There were no guardrails. There was no orthodoxy. There was no, well, she's in sixth grade, she's taking sixth grade math. They said, no, but there's scores. You gotta put her here. Oh, there's a whole cadre of kids. They have the work ethic and the scores, but self-accelerate the kids. And so if you move those kids who are working hard and they perform into Algebra I in eighth grade, now the math ceiling gets, gets higher. Brutal facts. Were a hundred and twenty six out of a hundred and eighty nine. I don't know about you guys. I am somewhat competitive. I like to do well. I didn't leave Alaska to come back to Kuzbey and stay a hundred and twenty six. Right? There's some community pride in that, right? Math proficiency, the number on the right is the state, the number on the left is us. So in aggregate, we're twenty three percent. The state is thirty one percent. Obviously, Co- COVID did a number to everybody, right? Big gaps. If you look at it as a visual, if you take a hundred Kuzbey kids, twenty of them, twenty, twenty of them are proficient now. Take a hundred. Reading ELA proficiency, thirty eight percent us, forty four of the state. If you look at it as a visual, hundred kids in Kuzbey, forty of them are proficient reading. Graduation rate, sixty nine us, eighty one the state. So if you take a hundred kids in our system. Thirty one of them are not gonna graduate. That's not acceptable. We are losing kids. Somewhere along the line, we're losing kids. And every thirty one, there's a face and a name, a story to every one of those kids. So the next set of data, we talk about growing the green, reducing the red. Grow the green, reduce the red. So this is why I want you to focus on. This is devil's, this is a, this is a, uh, elementary reading, um, exam. Happens beginning of the year, middle of the year, at the end of the year. Here's what's positive. If you look at the red, it's shrinking. Eastside and Madison are reducing the red and they are growing the green and the blue. Kindergarten readiness, they come in low. Our kids come in really low. Hundred kids in Kuzbey come in kindergarten, eighty six percent of them are not. Ready to read a grade level. And that means things like, do you know your ABCs? Do you know that B is buh and C is like, are your basic foundational, if I put two words together, they make a sound, Addie?
Do we have any data on how many of those kids went to preschool?
Oh, oh, we do. I don't have it. That's, yeah. I see the impact. Can you get that? That would be, yeah, I'll take a look at that.
Well, I mean, I think that's the, right, that's part of the hope with some of the, you know, um, the. Pre-school promise things is that we will start to have some, some impact.
Come in, yeah.
Please the readiness.
We've had head start for a long time.
Yeah, I know. The data of head start though is kinda iffy. I mean, I.
I know.
You know, I was like, I, I bet I thought there was something gonna be changing and it seemed to be go back to the status quo at some point, because there was some. Some hubbub about.
Yeah.
Lack of impact in some, certain areas, so.
I think that when you're looking at head start kiddos, they're a hundred and thirty percent or less of poverty level. And preschool promise goes up to the two hundred percent of poverty level, which is still, I mean, it's. You, you know, you're not making ends meet, but when you're at that hundred and thirty percent or less. The home life usually is, um, you know.
Impacted.
Very, very impacted by a lot of, of demographic issues and, and other things that are happening in the home. And so sometimes those kids aren't even ready to sit at a circle before they come to head start. And when they've had head start for a year or two, and then they're able to sit. At a circle and, um, engage with other, other teachers and they're not sharing the classroom reports. Um, then that's hard to measure in a, you know, evidence sense. When they're coming into kindergarten and you're like, oh, they went head start for two years, but this kid doesn't know all of the ABCs. Well, he's not sharing all the books off the wall. You're welcome for that.
Yeah, because you don't know how they often.
Uh, yeah, but they do have academic test. I mean, they do have really rigorous testing, both federally and state. Because you've got the, you know, ODE that, well, they'll be separated from there. For early learning division and then you've got, they're also, uh, monitored through federal. So you've got the performance standards on that end and then all the federal testing, so. There is a lot of data there, but yeah.
I, I noticed that they're coming down. But do we know why there's a difference between Eastside and Madison in the?
The Eastside kids, I don't have the exact, the Eastside, the, the Madison kids come in a little lower. Partly the, I think the poverty rate is higher in that community. Um, I, I have to be careful here because I'm not a hundred percent on this. I think maybe the Eastside teaching staff might be a little more veteran. Someone mentioned, right? So some, some teachers have been around and you know, teaching is a, is an art of science, right? Takes a while. Um, I'm, there's confounding factors in, in, in the data.
I, just can I ask a question kind of on, to piggyback on that? Um, one of the growths was that you noticed the system were kind of separate in the schools. Uh, I think like, how do you think we got there? How did, how did it get so? Separated where maybe. They were performing or doing things one way that was working and then not so much at the other end of things. I mean.
So I have to be careful with that answer.
I mean, the leader, I mean, is it leadership? Is that we weren't sharing information or practices? I mean.
Or it's a teacher development. I mean, we need to invest more in those kids.
As a board, as a board, I've been here for a little bit. I, I think it was, in fact, it was allowed. Uh, honestly, it was allowed. I mean, I think that was what it was. It was, it was la- lack of, of a clear sense of, no. This is not gonna happen. There needs to be a commonality about agreement and that needs to be enforced equally across. So there was, there was a lot of, oh, you can do your thing, you can do your thing and, and that was okay. And so I think what we've learned is. Given the fact that there are best practices and models, that really isn't okay. I mean, we, 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 we know what should be put in place and we need to make sure that's consistently.
I just remember getting a presentation from, I think it was Eastside. Um, and I love all of our schools and I think every one of them shines in a different way, but. To me, it was clear maybe why they weren't having quite the behavior issues at some of the other schools. Because of some of the things that they had in place when they presented, when Eastside presented. And then, mm, the whole time, all I was thinking is why aren't those same practices happening over at Madison or Sunset?
Those are my questions every time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I asked them, you know, what's happening at Madison? And it's usually Eastside's a little bit farther along than Madison. While we're developing that, we're sending the teachers now, the teachers at Eastside went to a training a year before any of the Madison teachers went. And so your quote back there of the students that need the most, what deserve the best. I mean, that, that, we, we have to spread that across the system. So it's in some alignment. I think that's. A huge, it's gonna be something huge that you tackle with this district.
Yeah.
Yeah. ELY and ELY and ELY.
Beginning year, middle year, end of year. I, I, I also think that, um, having been at both of those schools as the liaison. There are different, there are different, there are different communities. They are all different sub communities. And so the needs and the, the schools. Are gonna be a bit different because the communities are part of it as well. I mean, not, I don't think radically different, but, but enough to make some impact. I mean, in, uh, in fact, I, I do think in some ways though. It, it really creates some strengths and advantages for Madison and Sunset because there is more of. Uh, uh, possibility for those schools to really become integrated into those neighborhoods because there's more of a need somewhere. And so I really, when I've been at, uh, both the Madison and Sunset, I'm like. There really is something that we can help take advantage of in those communities that probably is not gonna be as strong in Eastside. So how do we do that?
Yeah.
Right?
If there was a consistent thing from my perspective, it's been here for a long time. Parental involvement on the Eastside was always greater than parental involvement on the Westside.
Hmm.
And so it was much harder to get parents into the schools when you're at Madison than it was to get them in appropriate.
Eastside.
Eastside.
I wonder why.
And I, and I, lifestyles where they're at, poverty levels, all those things make it hard. Um, but I think, um, it goes to. You can have a bigger impact if, if you, if you're the only impact you're gonna have on kids, which is some. You can have a bigger impact if, if you, if you're the only impact you're gonna have on kids, which is sometimes what happens when you don't have the parental involvement. But if there's clearly a indicator of success as we go through, it's parental involvement. Um, you know, we used to always have that conversation when we have an awards assembly at the high school. Now look at that, almost every kid on stage has both parents sitting in the audience.
Yeah.
Well, isn't that shocking? Shouldn't be, but. So we have to figure out how to make up for those deficits, our shortcomings.
Yeah, and I think it's a. I don't think it's necessarily a people problem, I think it's a systems problem, I think a lot of people in our district are working really hard. I think people are working hard, I think people really care about kids and the community, sure, we're like any other profession. There's some people that need some correction and all those things, but in totality. I just don't think we're always working hard on the right things. And I don't think we're working hard in unison, right? And so I'd say similar identical, you have systems that are similar, and sure, how I teach that unit or that curriculum from Madison. There's, there could be some variance in there, but that's the art of teaching. Um, but I, I really think it, it's a, it's a system issue.
You want the outcome. What you, you want, you can go about getting there, but at the end of the day, we want all kids here.
And they're all growing.
Right.
So in third grade, we're, we're flat. Something's happened in third grade. So if you look at the red, thirty-seven percent beginning of year, and then the red at the end, E O Y, it's thirty-seven percent. So it's flat. And third grade is a pivotal year in elementary school, critical year that they're reading at grade level proficiency.
It remind me, so, uh, these, these data are, are norm, nationally norm, right? So what we're basically saying is, it's not that these kids aren't making progress. They're just not making any more, any more progress than others relative to any other district, right? So, so they're, they're wherever level, they're not, we're not, we're not. As a district, we're not making any gains overall, right, those, those kids are still developing, but in, in relationship to other districts, without, without any different changes.
Yeah, it's nationally norm versus criteria, right?
It's also one of the transition years, they moved to a different school.
Yeah.
You know, it used to be we moved it later on, sixth grade, now, third grade is one of those. And I, I was wondering if transitions have always been hard.
Yeah.
In schools, super hard. Is that a problem?
And we create a lot of transitions here.
Yes, we do.
I'm not sure, more than we need, and I, the facilities are a bit, they're beautiful, but. My personal opinion is sixth graders need to get to middle school. They need to be around seventh and eighth graders, right, when you leave sixth graders with elementary students. I think academically, it creates a little bit of a lag, transitioning, it, it should be a K five.
Yes.
Keep them in a K five model, then what happens in sixth grade is you throw these kids in middle school, so they have lockers, they have seven teachers. And there's some challenges with middle school, but the hardest years in transition are fifth to sixth. Eighth to ninth, and twelve to thirteen, those are the big transitions. And we, I, I think we delay the sixth grade transition by not moving to the middle school by seventh grade. So it delays that progress, I'm not sure that's where I want to tackle.
You know, I. Fifth graders are good role models for second graders. When you have second, if you find, they haven't learned how to be a role model for any of us.
No.
Let alone themselves, I, I don't, I don't see how that works, but that's. That happened in between my years, so.
I know, I know, you know, it's a little hard, because it may be reading too much into the data, but it does look to me like. The kids that are struggling at the beginning of the year are the same kids that are struggling at the end of the year. But then other kids that are not in as well below benchmarks, they may be making some improvements. I, I don't know if that's too much, you know, that.
And it only took people out of the other two units, it didn't take any out of the.
The red.
Exactly.
And I forgot to mention, when you guys came in, but there is yogurt also, it's just in the fridge down there, so if anyone would like yogurt, I'm happy to go get it.
Thank you.
Addie, anytime, you wanna take a timeout for bathroom breaks?
Yeah, e- anytime, please.
No, it's your, yeah, your call.
Oh.
No?
You mean, sure, it's just a good break.
Just perfect, yeah, perfect, yeah.
Can I ask another question, I mean, just since we're going to break, I'm just curious.
Next step.
My question. I sent it in that email back, I can't remember who the staff member was, but. Had sent an email regarding early childhood, childcare, and I talked to you about teen parent program. And we had talked to Charis, I don't know, is that in our strategic plan, did we talk about that, because we had. We had so much conversations about that at the, um. At the community, uh, meetings that we all. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But, um, and, and then we came together at one of the board meetings, and we had. Opened it towards Charis of really starting to have those conversations. About, you know, the next steps, how to make that happen, and probably facilities are just gonna come up time and time again, and one of the things I talked about with. Arnie, and maybe you too, was that year after year. It's, I mean, since I was a student here, our alt ed program has been cut, been cut, been cut, been cut. And even up until just last year, I mean, we went from having a full-time director to having a TOSA. And for things that really need. You know, full attention, I think they need the most, they deserve the best. And facilities cut, I mean, it's just loss after loss after loss. And so. That's one of the things I would really, I, I'm gonna keep bringing it up time and time again.
Yes.
Programs, alt ed, teen parent program, early childhood. Childcare, I mean, all of it, all aligns, it fits together. And it can make, be an amazing thing for our community, we're not short on teen parents, they're here.
No.
When you have a teen parent program, it's not positive.
I have. Because they know they have. Yeah. With, with the teen hair program, I'm, this is just coming out of curiosity. I think, is it, and don't shoot me, Kim, no, okay. Is it outdated, and I, I say this, I ask this because. There was a time when somebody was pregnant, you went to an alternative program, you went to these different things. You know, it was, you were, I don't wanna say isolated, but it was clear that you were in a separate program. So had society views shifted enough that maybe we just, we.
There are different bests, but that's probably your definition of a teen parent program.
Maybe.
Because that, because for us, the teen parent program was, you had a place where your kids came and went to school.
Okay.
And you got training on being a parent, and you could go to any one of the programs.
Yeah, exactly. Everyday, regular. Rooms, um, I think, for me, when I went to high school, the teen hair program. It, it felt, um, and I thought me and Kim were already right around the same age, and. It felt very like segregated.
Absolutely.
They were, you know, yeah, we don't want those kids.
Those kids.
That was not the way we tried our.
It was, did you go here?
And our coach.
Okay, I was gonna say here, it was very inclusive. Um, it was a place, a safe place where you could take your kids, they took a, a few of the staff kids to. They were, were the mixed delivery classroom, so you didn't just have students or children in poverty. You had, um, social, different socioeconomic groups. And their other students could come in also to learn child development. I mean, it was, and how to, I mean, we've got systems right now where they can go to work. E S D, we have Head Start, we've got our own preschool promise, there's also, um, opportunities in other close-knit communities. So it was classes, it was, you could go to the regular high school, you could go to calculus and still be a parent. But you didn't have to worry.
And so are we feeling like as a community? That that resource is nowhere else, and that would be the responsibility of the school district to provide, that's my curiosity.
And it took us forever to get it. And I did take that one to Lucid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bart Bassett was our coach.
Yeah.
Uh, and she was our community coach and parent.
Yep.
Trainer, it was amazing.
I mean, I know childcare in general, overall, so I, having a child and choosing to keep that child through high school, I would imagine. Not having a, a system established in place so you can be successful with. As a board member.
That's why I left school.
Yeah.
They had taken their job.
As a board member, I have been, because, I don't know, especially when I first went on the board. I had a piece in the world back when it was a newspaper, I don't know. It came out, and then about how I was championing the teen parent program. And so many people reached out to me, and including faith, faith-based groups that said, you know, I've got twenty teen moms in our program. Eighteen of them are no longer in school, I've got two on the GED track, SWAC, but eighteen of them aren't in school. I got contacted by Lord Ben, I mean. It was crazy, they're still out there. Um, we do have some that are engaged, we had Kayla watching, you know, a couple of the kids, well, and she was the principal.
Mm-hmm.
And so that, that two teen moms could go to school, I mean, that was above and beyond and fantastic, but if we had an actual program. We would see things that stuck.
Okay, well, that seems to segue right. Um, that is the next item on our agenda. You should have in your packet a copy of our board goals from last year. Which, as I look at them, seem very meager. We didn't, we didn't ask much of us.
Changed, because when we were going through some strikes with our previous superintendent, the goal shifted that our goal. Do you guys remember this, was to actually just support the superintendent, am I here, am I remembering correctly, or?
Yeah.
When we had that meeting with Ben, and so. It actually shifted into actually just providing support. For the superintendent with our.
I, yeah, I can't tell you, these goals were direct result of that meeting that we established, literally the next board meeting. Um. But, but I remember that discussion, and then taking the board minutes from there.
Okay.
This is, but that is where we talked about it with Ben's.
See, and I don't, because I wasn't talking for it when he was established.
You were not meeting when Vince came, right?
No, no, it was before me.
Wait.
No, I didn't say, because you've been on the board for a little bit.
One year.
Well, yeah, because it was last.
Fall.
Seven.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Unless you happen to be gone that one, I don't know.
I think I missed.
Gee, I remember, we were all there, but anyways, so. I don't know, we're, we're having conversations.
Okay.
So I think it's important, obviously, but hopefully we can do more work to just support me. We got a whole district to the kids, right?
I'm like, we are gonna do this, development training, check, training premises, check. We did that two truths and a lie, we got a good relationship with you, check, if you got your communication system, check, all right. Let's move on from that, you know that we're gonna support you, so what is actually? A good board goal for us?
I think we should do, um, the self-assessment that those have put, that, um, the School Board Association puts on. Every year, you can fill out all that self-assessment stuff, we haven't done it for a while, I think we need to, haven't we?
Yeah, we did, when we was awesome, we did it.
I feel like we do. I don't know, I've never feel like so great, it's really long.
I know.
All right, here we go.
I know, it seems like yesterday, but it was probably two thousand nineteen or twenty, I don't know.
My problem. I agree.
Yeah, I happen to.
Wait, I'm so confused, you guys, I'm so sorry. Are we, are four goals separate from?
Yeah.
Well, from district goals.
Yeah.
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 He's a rest person.
Okay. Versus like, our goals aren't the district's?
Yeah.
We just have our own little hole. Well, like, we've had math, we've had reading, we've had. That's what I'm saying, our behavior. Is that the goal, like, are?
Yes.
What was that our goal?
It was about behavior, wasn't it, in the classrooms?
It was.
Supporting.
Um.
We had one on behavior, attendance, we had one. Math was for a while.
I'll be honest, the, it took me a long time the first time I was trying to pull the latest goals, because. As I look back at the minutes, it was re-adopt last year's goals.
Yeah.
For the last five, so I had a number of years to get, wh- what am I re-adopting?
We went to a new goal in two thousand nineteen. Which refocused us from, I think it went from math to reading, reading was a core goal. To two thousand nineteen, it went to behavior, because behavior started just skyrocketing, then we went to Covid. And so we changed that to an online platform goal. And then we were resurfacing from Covid, coming back with even stronger behaviors in the classrooms than before. And so talking with, you know, having the presentations with teachers and our soup, and. You know, everybody that was involved, it was, please, please stick with this, because we have to have manageable classrooms in order to teach.
But I think, you know, at least. I, when I started, there was this idea that, and I think. Adrian would, if he was here, probably would remind us that, that board went to a training about being the lighthouse model, that the board was. It, it, part of the job was to create a folk, a focus in district, and so trying to create a, a, alignment with a goal that, that, that did that. Um, but I, I do think that since I've been here. I don't know how helpful our board goals have been, honestly, vocal fans or vocal fans of the district. You know, I, I.
Well, I would like to change that.
Or would you like?
I'd like to add, um, conduct listening sessions on as one of our goals, um, listening sessions with. Community, students, faculty.
So as like that, uh, uh, what would be the actual outcome of that, what, what are we looking to, like, would that be under communication?
It's under feedback.
Why? Why would we have a different goal than what we're setting for the district? The district's goals are this, why would we have a separate goal, how we get there, we can determine.
We, we personally can't change the goal for the district. We, we can't obtain those goals.
No, but we can give Justin our feedback and have data.
Again, that our goal then is to give him feedback.
I would think our goal as a board would be also to meet, I, I'm just asking.
No.
But that's my question.
Do you mean like you wanna say the board goal is to attain seventy-five percent graduation rate?
I mean, what, is that crazy, or is that, I don't know, like, I don't know how other boards do it, but. To me, why wouldn't we find a way, or however we wanna present it, it, why wouldn't it funnel directly into whatever the district goals are? Or it should be a separate goal that is about reflection and evaluating our su- our own effectiveness, like. I'm unsure, yes.
Right, I see them as two separate things.
Okay.
Personally, I see, one is the, is the goals we set as a board for our district, and it's forward. And we give that to the su- to the superintendent to implement, we help set that goal.
Okay.
And we can do that from lots of different ways.
And we evaluate our predictions.
And we do that.
So that's not a board goal, right?
As a board member, how do I grow as an effective board member? What do I need to do to grow, what are my goals to improve? I go to conferences, why do I go to conferences, to get a better insight into what other people are doing and. And the problems that different boards are having, and all the other kind of stuff, and how do we develop that goal? How do I, I, I think reading these books would be a good.
Yeah.
Personal goal. Um, because if the district is re- looking at these, I should be looking at them also, and, and evaluating them and. By self-growing with respect to, so. So I see them as two separate goals, and whether or not we set board goals, I will set my own. Because I, I do think that it's important for me to have something to aspire to, to get better at, um, over time. How do you develop relationships with other board members, so that you can have the ineffective board? Because there are, by golly, a lot of ineffective boards right now throughout this country. Um, and, and we don't wanna ever get to that one, so what is it that we can do as a board? Um, to each one of them.
I get what you mean, I think I'm getting hooked on the word board goal, because we said board goals, and then we talked about a bunch of percentages and things like that.
We're all the board goal.
Then we said board goals again, and we're like talking about something different, so one is actually maybe district goals, and then one is actually the board.
Yeah.
But it's not our personal.
No.
No, 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 no. No, 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 it's a collective, what we, I get what you're saying.
I think it is, I think it's confusing, because, and I think that's why this is on here focusing. So last time as a board, we were very focused on helping the superintendent. So I think that's as a board, that, well, we came together in that area, but I think historically our goals have been to highlight. A specific aspect. As a, as a sort of lighthouse model. But I think it's quite good, it's, you know. What do we want to do? We don't. The lighthouse has been a tradition. This has been more of a recent occurrence, but what do we wanna do? To me. We don't, the district goals, I think, I think we are outlined pretty clearly about the areas, what the targets are. But we may wanna take a goal as a, as a board of the full about things that we wanna do, and I think adding thing is, one thing she'd like to see is. Uh, 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 having more time really set up for listening to the. And I, I think, I, I think that we have our different. We haven't really done that, other than whoever kind of comes to us. Or whether it's, although we did have to do it with the. The planning, so, so maybe, uh, statistician would say we did that quite good already, or.
And the equity group. Is a wonderful place for.
But people came, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, people come when you give them an opportunity to talk. And I'd like to hear. What's on people's mind, what's on students' minds, what's working at the school and what isn't? And we can have teachers tell us that, we can have Justin tell us what's working, but unless the kids feel like it's working, it's not working.
So you can, you can, this is a great conversation, trying to figure this out. And surveys are limited, but they, they are valuable. And I think if you guys were to say we wanna survey that students twice a year, that would be important. Because they, they will tell you if they feel safe, if they feel loved, they feel challenged, if they feel engaged. It's one data point, but it's a really important data point.
We have that, yeah, on the strategic plan, it's students and teachers, there's surveys for them.
Just because the only kids that come to listening groups, so people wanna come to listening.
And have the transportation.
You don't get a very cross section of your community. Happy people either. But I don't think you get. It's a real prospect from what you're trying to think.
It's just, I think we need to get some direct feedback. When we heard parents talk about how bad they are. I'd really like to hear that from students.
So, I just want to remind us, the reason that I think we did the superintendent one last time. Was that we got feedback fairly quickly, that when we did the evaluation of our superintendent. The area that we found her weakness in is one that the, the district administrators wanna ask her. And then we put, set her up sexually in the length of when we are. And so we felt important about having that.
I have a suggestion for a board member goal. Complete the public meeting law training with. Cause you're statutorily required to do it, so it would be a good goal. Uh, and it looks like Kim likes that one, because she's done with it.
Another way in, another potential goal is, uh, Vince's board governance, uh, PD.
Done it.
Oh, you guys have done it?
Well, I've done it.
What is it?
His professional development on board governance.
Yeah, I did that one. He also did a really good one on community engagement. It was a webinar. It was just a few weeks ago. And it was really quite good.
I, you know, I hear you, Abby, too. Sometimes I think also. Engaging with the community, because sometimes also the community, well, the board should be held responsible, but they. Also think we have a lot more power than, um, we do, and then sometimes when people. Come to like air their grievances. It's hard to say, do you just wanna air your grievances, or what do you wanna see? I always love when they go come and say. I hate this, and then, but then they say, but here's my idea of how to make it better, so. I, I do think there is, I do understand what you're saying in building. Um, some relationship and so people can understand really what our roles and responsibility is, and then like. Hearing people, but making it clear, like, we can hear you and we can pass the information down and we can hear all of this stuff, but. Ultimately. Our guidance is for Justin and then Justin. And that's one of the things we were just talking about too, is that, our job to do the work. I mean, our job is to set the, the direction and, and say, y- you figure out. How we're gonna get there, and then bring us the data to show us that you got there, or what, what are you doing, you know? How's it been going? So. We talked about surveys, you know, how. You know, one of the goals is the, the surveys for the students, for the teachers. And we've got surveys that we can give out to the community that we have done in the past. Those could be, you know.
We could follow through with them, in other words. Cause they're goals, but we don't do them.
Yeah, we can go do them for you and they get you the results.
So.
So that's a goal of mine. Is to get community.
Community.
You want it twice a year, huh? You can get survey, right? You get survey happy.
So let's just do twice a year. You know, and you can, we can do, you know, community, we can, I mean, students, I think is really important. And, yeah, I think that those things are important, kind of tease them out of our strategic plan and put a, highlight them as a board goal. Go ahead.
I, I, personally, I, I really appreciate Justin, the, the call out, because I said that on the board. The fact that we need to be doing better, we can do better in certain areas, I, I think to me, I would like to highlight that, because. You know, i- if we're gonna set a tone for the district, to me, that's what it should be, I mean, it, to me, it's just. Our performance areas has just, has not been acceptable, really is not acceptable, and I, and I'd like to be able to clearly call that out. Say, you know what, I have dedicated, we, we need to do better in these areas, and. I mean, I think graduation is one, our reading, and I, we, those, those things are just not okay. And so I, I can be clear about that, it's a board, to me, is important, because if we can call up. An alignment, that that's what I would say.
I think it's really important from the dais, I don't want to say you guys said of your job, but as a team, right? It's really important for the community and our administrators and our teachers to hear you guys talking about student achievement. They need to hear that that's important. Because if we get stuck on rabbit trails, and they need to know that that's the North Star, and they need that honesty, right? That's part of your job is the accountability.
And I think we can add communication into, because we do know. That communication has been faulty at the district because. The community was talking about everything under the sun on Facebook and this and that, and then there was all these wonderful things in the works. And nobody knew about it, so the complaint happening, so maybe we could. Grab communication and that could fall into the. Survey thing, so we can really honor what Abby is saying, but. Also get that broad goal and, and. Say, yes, we expect more, and this is what our focus is. Well, that's easy to take care of, because he's got a communication plan. And because of that social media platform, I mean, you could just have hashtag MHS or whatever hashtag is. For everything that's great, teachers could post, parents could post, hashtag Marshallville High School, whatever, go, go pirate. And then you've got, he's got his, uh, you've got your community address that you're gonna do, you've got teachers, you've got board. I think that's a really easy time to say, hey, this was the goal, we've already, we've published it, or we're working on it with our new superintendent. You guys are, I'm, you guys are the smartest people in the room here, so I'm. Well, I'm flexible, I just, I want Abby to make sure, like, she feels heard and that, like, there's gonna be ways to get the information that. Because it seems really important to her. Still mean it, and so, I know. Yeah, I mean.
So, I, yeah. Uh, so just for my notes. For board goals. Have we established that completing a community slash student survey twice a year is a board goal? Okay. Okay, we'll do that.
At least one of our members has already done it.
Is, I know this is, is aligned with the strategic plan, but. Targets aligned to goals and systems of accountability, could that be a board goal?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, for us to basically look at those. Goals and set targets for you.
Natural work.
And then, how are we going to?
You guys are gonna tell me. We want this of accountability, and then I'm gonna build it, I'm gonna present it to you, and they're gonna say, oh, I like that, I don't like that, tweak that into. I can help build it, but I need a directive from you to build.
So we. So David, you're gonna wordsmith it?
So I have that written as set targets aligned to district goals and establish systems of account.
Um, monitor, because we're. We're not establishing it, he's establishing it. He's gonna build the system. We're gonna monitor that, we're gonna have feedback and monitoring.
So David, our chair would like to know what.
So the three I have confirmed at this point are complete public meeting law training with OGAC. Uh, complete a community slash student survey twice a year, set targets aligned to district goals and monitor systems.
Can we add to the community survey? As a way to. Gather community, communication from our. What, target population? Constituents, something like that.
Would be more specific about accountability.
Like. Hold on one second, can we finish this real quick? I didn't want it to be reflect what Abby was saying, that we wanna make sure that there's, um, communication. Communication that's out there to our community and students, so that that goal aligns. With what she, she was saying, instead of the listening groups for doing surveys out, so we can hopefully get a wider audience.
Put down, just say, um, kind of what we have now, to. Get feedback from our constituents.
Collect feedback from constituents.
But then does that eliminate students?
No. So I have it written now as. Complete a community slash student survey twice a year as a way to gather input from our constituents.
Thank you, David, and then, David, sorry.
I, I just. I don't wanna lose track of. My wanting to focus on. Rather than accountability, but it's accountability towards, towards, towards what? Which is to me is, is, is around our, our standards of, of learning and, and success around. You know, graduation and student learning, achievement, so I, I don't wanna just have it, cause if I read accountability, I'm gonna be like. I mean, if, if to me, it's clear in our goals, that this really has to do with, with student achievement and success, so student learning. And.
Well, isn't it already into the one sentence where it says, we're setting targets? That align with our goals, and that's, so the systems of accountability that you're, you're building. We're, we're just saying that we're gonna monitor that. So, can you tell us a little bit more about how, I mean, I figure you have an idea, so if it's accountability, that you wrote this?
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm thinking about what you said, Dave, so the board or the, um, the collaborative governance model, they say. You know, monitor the systemic progress, like, that's a standard, and then under that. They say accountability and they say using data. Um, but you're right, when you look at accountability, not everything is aligned to student achievement, most of it is. Um, but if you wanted to focus, you, you could say, instead of the word. Let's say progress, monitor, student learning. Right? To be more, I, my tracking to be more specific.
Yeah, that, that it's called on, on the basis of where our prime focus. Not in all the. You know, what other accountability is.
It's a lot of areas.
I don't want, I, I don't wanna detract from the main focus.
I know it's not gonna be accountability in regards to the, the four or five alignment. It's not gonna be that, because that's what I thought it was related to, so we set the targets. You are working on the system that will achieve those targets, and then we monitor and look at progress. You come to us with data, here's where our baseline was, when we talk about graduation on time, we talk about reading, we talk about math. We talk about attendance, that's where I thought the accountability was associated with those targets.
It is, but I think what David's saying is that's such a broad term. We wanna be clear about what kind of accountability is.
What kind of accountability?
So you say things like, and, and I guess my mind is going a little bit, accountability can be a little bit of a negative. So you could say progress mon- that's why I went with progress monitor.
So just say, because we already have that in that goal, so if you just take out accountability.
So I changed it to set targets aligned to district goals and progress monitor student.
And achievement.
It's not very sexy, I would say, you know. Well, I just, it, it should be something that is certainly aspirational for us in terms of our goal, that's why I just, I did, would like to have it. Set up a la- a language that really reflects a, a vision. To me, doesn't affect, reflect the vision, you know, i- if, if we look at what we've done historically, which is this sort of light up model, where we really are trying. To shine a light on something, you know, and, 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 and maybe it's we can do better, I, I don't know. Something, something where accountability of things really focus on us doing, doing better and, and achieving these things that we really. Know that are, are really mandatory, required, right? We need to get there, so. Um, I just think that if we just use the, you know, targets, accountability, that stuff gets lost, and I would prefer to have it. That's what we highlighted, and accountability and those things are underneath are assumed, that's, that's how we sort of get there.
Yeah, I'm, I think I am. I'm here, I'm aligned here. Like, I, and maybe I'm way confused, but. I feel like I'm aligned there, we're saying, like, we have a new superintendent, we're gonna, we haven't been setting expectations for these students. We haven't been, um, reaching these goals, these are all the things we haven't done, and we have somebody who's gonna come in. And, and believes in our students, believes in our staff, believes in our faculty, how does our goal match that energy? That's the best way I can word it, and these things are all important and good ways to get us there, but how do we make that statement? And matching the energy that in being worked out, I don't know.
So how about instead of progress monitoring, student learning and achievement, it's progress monitor student learning? And improvement? Cause then we're marking that we are not where we should be.
I still think, to me, it's the same problem, it's still, it's the, it, the vision gets buried underneath.
Do you have a suggestion?
Right, give us something, say something out loud. Does this goal, is this a goal that goes out, like, everybody knows our goal? Transparent goal that's posted on the website and that, you know. My first year, huh? Because the reason I ask that is, if I'm a parent or a student or a community member and I'm reading that. The first thing I get is to survey, but what does that really mean? What, what are, what are? I agree, you, I don't, I agree. And so, okay, I'm, I'm a parent and I'm like, well, sit some, I know we're, not, but systems of accountability, what does that mean to me? What is that?
How about if we just say to them, like, we're gonna, the goal, our goal is to hold, we're gonna hold ourselves accountable. Let's, hold on. We're, we're gonna hold ourselves accountable for. For this. The success of our, of our students. I don't know.
I can't do that. That's committing us to too much.
Can the mission statement be the? Or, yeah, like, that's, because that's the, that's the North Star, right? We know every, not that you're gonna know every student by name, but. We know our students by name, we know their strengths, we know their needs, and really, the end goal is they lead the system with a plan. Right, and then your goals are supporting the mission, because then we can nest your goals under the mission, right?
Yeah, to me, it should all definitely tie together. Yeah, to me, it should all definitely tie together.
Yeah. But I think David is right, things like accountability, you know, it's, it's jargony, you know, people don't pay attention to it, but what they do pay attention is our conversations.
Right.
They pay attention to my presentations, they pay attention to how we operate.
David, was there a board goal before this? Goal?
Um. I have to give you a minute.
And is the lighthouse project, I mean.
Can we say something so broad as to say we, we hold ourselves accountable for students' success?
Not like that.
Can we say something that our decisions are driven by um like um, that students are on the path to this enlisted, listed, enrolled type thing? I mean, I don't, is that too broad? We're gonna staff in these things, but how we do that is by giving them clear measures to, to reach them and then monitoring progress of how, what they've done and so I'm wondering.
Wording for your mission statement again, could you just say? Yeah, so. Um, we will, we will know all students by name, strengths and needs, right? So the strength piece is asset based, which we're not always great at. Needs, and then we will ensure all students graduate with a plan. Enrolled, employed, or enlisted, three E's.
And I love.
Now, rolled up my tongue, but. So our, our goal is to ensure that the systems are in place so that we can attain those goals.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
So can't we just say?
Yeah. I, I mean, that, that pulls me in mind, what I.
Yeah.
My, my thought is, is it something where, it's, it's more visionary in terms of.
How does that go, how does that align with some of our, you know, we're talking about our I E P. They're all ed students, I mean, maybe it does. I'm just, I just had three kids graduate from here and.
If, to me, it encompasses all kids, right? Because no matter where the kids are at, they all, I'll be honest, every kid's got an I P, I think.
Yeah.
Right? Every kid is gifted in something, but what I love about it is strengths. And this is where I'm gonna talk to staff about, they all have strengths. Every one of those kids who walks into your room has a strength. It's an asset based mentality, you've gotta build off the strength first, and they all have needs. And it doesn't matter if they're in the ninety percentile or they're in the thirty fifty, all have a need, it's our job to find the need and support the kid. And then that is a day to day, week to week, that's what I like, but that's a day to day, week to week process, but that long game is it's all building to graduation.
Right.
And so I guess it's personalized for all kids.
My, my only question, I have three students that graduated from here, all on I E Ps, and I D, O D T, A D H, all of the, all of the D's. And none of them are enrolled, enlisted, and employed. Um.
We've been, the system, um.
I think, but I get what you're saying, but I'm on the opposite, I'm not to interrupt you, but I, I do think it's important. That's what I like about the employed and the, because maybe some of our kiddos, not to say they wouldn't, that are on five or four I E Ps. You know, oh, I'm only gonna graduate because, or I'm not gonna graduate, I'm not gonna do this class because I'm not gonna go to college, but those same classes can help them be employed or.
I agree, but it's just saying that there, I love the whole thing, but all students are gonna be enrolled, employed, and not that I say, not that I'm saying.
It's that they will have a plan.
But, but then the, the three E's are a part of it. They're gonna be either enrolled, enlisted, or employed.
Plan to be enrolled, enlisted, or.
Employed, and it, I guess there could be a five year plan for somebody with severe special needs to try.
Yep.
You know. Do the can plug.
Because they have.
You know, what, what, yeah, whatever it is, so I guess you could narrow it down that.
And it's, it's aspirational, right? You gotta set someone's aspiration to stretch people.
I just wanna make sure that our community are seeing themselves in that plan.
The what?
That our communities are seeing, our community and our students are seeing themselves in that plan, and that they're they're able to say, okay, that, and probably ninety nine, whatever, it's probably just me.
Well, only sixty nine percent of our students are graduating.
Yeah.
Can we say something like, the board will ensure that systems are in place for implementing um, our goal to have, and then go on with what the mission statement says, you know, every kid be known, every kid graduate with a plan, yada yada. That, that forms our overall goal. And then under that, we get our things like collect feedback from the constituents and those are our steps to get that information.
What do you think on that, David?
That's what I like, that's, that's what I would suggest, I'd like to have that over actually, then we can have the specific other things that we wanna address as well.
And that's.
So that's our goal, is to make sure you have everything you need to put in place.
That, that. Vision.
That vision.
And, and also to, to, to maintain, to help us as a whole, maintain our, our focus in that area, right?
That's right.
We're gonna keep bringing it back to that, that focus.
That's right. Okay, so.
Rather than the, just the building, state of our buildings, or the.
The football stadium, right? Yeah, so underneath it should be constant reporting, you know, regular reporting.
Yeah, reporting.
On progress towards goals.
So for the wording for that goal, what about establish clear measurable targets aligned with district goals and implement a robust system of monitoring and supporting our mission of ensuring each student graduates with a plan to be enrolled and listed.
That's great, super, add that front part too, about the name, the strength, and the needs.
Something.
So we got it.
Why don't, why don't you send it out, David?
Yeah, send that again.
Maybe it can work, it seems a little, it seems a little uh.
Word.
That, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it could be shortened at the front end.
And Kim, I just wanna say, I do believe in your kiddos and they all have the capability to be employed, I believe everybody can be employed.
I could say that at a different age.
That is like my.
Give it a year or two and see where everybody lands.
Hey, I don't feel like people who are non ambulatory, can't talk, and they push a button and, you know, our, the bell ringer, that salvation army, you know, I'm, I believe that everybody.
And then under that also comes in our goal of completing the law, you know, the public meeting rules. Because that's important in collecting feedback.
But is that a board goal, or is that just something we know that we have to do? Is that something that we wanna put out to the public? That that's what we're doing, or do we just hear, no, that then are?
I appreciate tell the public, because it's a requirement now, so let's tell the public, we understand it's a a requirement and.
We have the same problem with our Monday's meeting group, you guys do, they tell us that this is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Also put on there, putting our.
And they don't pay for it.
And they don't pay for it.
Personal addresses and our. Needs.
Okay, so I'll, I'll send that.
Okay.
Out to you guys and we can work with it. Um, we certainly don't have to establish all of the goals, but I think we need to have this conversation and then at our following board meeting, we can adopt the goals.
I agree.
And then, you know, maybe the, the full board will be there and they may have some insight.
Would as well, yeah.
Yeah. Sometimes I listen to what they have to say.
And Kevin is so good sometimes too, because he's so out of left field. I love, yeah, I love what Kevin says, Kevin's amazing.
So right now I have three potential goals, and I will send those all out to you for feedback, and then we'll bring them to the following board meeting and then item.
And way to move this along, David.
It did say update of our goal, that was only because I wanna make sure that we have regular feedback on our goal. And so when someone talks about a program that they're doing at a school, I wanna know how that all links back to me.
And I like, I like to know how things tie together.
Yeah.
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 Being a successful.
Okay. Let's move on to a developing preliminary superintendent goals, you will be successful, now.
I love it. And you're gonna outline all of our.
Oh, that, that's right.
Ten years, you said ten years, we're holding you to it.
Yeah.
That's a good goal, I like it.
I just don't wanna be perfect on this every time, but I just. No, I mean. Where does the whole end fit in? I'm with one, oh, Ed, I thought that.
What?
Where do you feel like it doesn't fit in?
No, I'm asking where it does fit in, because we had talked about this with Charis, and we gave her a goal at a board meeting. I just don't know where that went.
Yeah, oh yeah, I don't know where it went with Charis, I know that we have to make, going back to facilities, and facilities are certain parts of what we do, right? But it can't be the core part, but we have to make a decision about the district office.
Yes.
And I don't think politically or the optics would be good for me to ever put kids in this building.
No.
Obviously, you guys have had to temporarily. Um. We could grow our, our little pirates program with that building and our alt ed. Right now, there's, there's severe space constraints.
Right.
Up there.
We can't have everybody in there.
Yeah, if we were to move, and I'm just, right now I'm brainstorming, I'm collecting information, this is a potential spot for the district office with some T L C, it needs to be, you know, presentable for the public, but there's more room for alt ed and little pirates.
I love that idea.
Yeah.
The one, one thing you probably get uh feedback from your I T department, it's gonna be expensive to move that equipment here.
But they've been trying to move, they've been trying to move out of the bus.
I T, yeah.
But I thought all the I T equipment was here. I thought that was the whole problem with not giving up this building, and everything's embroidered here anyway.
All of our fiber optics friends are.
Yeah.
So where are we, I'm sorry, I got lost, where are we staying with you? Where would we like a little pirate? And. Miller Crest.
Miller Crest.
Okay, we stay. All that and I would love that.
And my vision for alt ed, and we had two, at some point I'll stop referencing that. Okay, that's my back, my last twelve years. Um, my vision for alt ed is for kids who are in triage and they really need help, but there's also a demographic of kids. High, high school's too big for them.
Right.
They don't want all the stimuli, they want, they want a smaller learning environment, and they're, they're academically strong.
Absolutely.
But they need that smaller environment, and you could do both versus just being a credit recovery.
Absolutely, I mean, we've had some students who graduated from alt ed who were amazing, they have small businesses, their families can have small businesses, they work the family business extremely bright. It's gone on.
We, we developed, we built part of it up there to bring back homeschool.
Yeah, that's my other.
We did, I was wondering about, that's why, that's probably us, the one program. Less, yeah, not highly used outside of its.
No.
I mean, it could be it could expand to serve other groups that research, like, well, that was the main design, was we were losing people to homeschooling, and we had parents coming back and saying, I did okay when they were in elementary school, but I don't know what to do with them when they get in high school, so um, is there a program? And we don't want them in the regular school?
Yeah, there's a, there's a spot, if you have eight, ten kids in a class, there are families and demographics that feels better for them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's personal, that's going back to our mission, mission. Strengths and needs, some of our students need a. Need a smaller program, hmm.
Yeah, we do wanna get you to Cancun though.
I had.
Bring it up every time.
I had a. I had a foster kid who went through their entire high school and two years of college all online because she couldn't take, when she'd go to class, there was too much stimuli going around by kids who weren't interested in learning to the extent that she was. Um, and so she was very successful doing it on her own, but you have to be.
Yeah, I mean, we were conflicted with anxiety or trauma, and that environment could just be just too much.
We didn't need a place for every student and the.
Right, yeah.
And team year program are, are places that some students will fit in nicely, it's not for everyone, but obviously, if you need, I'm, I'm on the, the parking lot. And I think that if it's a district priority, that things will be done instead of being the alt.
So do we want that to get one of potentially a goal and start with some of that focus and, and with that and, and maybe um, taking a deeper look at what alternate ed can be, and I think a teen parent program would fit under alternate education, it doesn't have to be separate, right?
Yeah, no, 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 it's, it's.
It's perfect.
All in alignment.
Yeah.
I, I, it just helps to have your guys' directive and direction, and that's the part of the scoreboard that I'm gonna chase it, right? Because part of my job is to keep people focused as well.
Are you off? We're gonna be off, I just wanna make sure this gets written down.
So.
Okay, so.
Is your turning word?
So work on goals for just. What was your goal?
Yes, whatever that was.
How?
Oh, you didn't write it down? I thought you were.
No. Well, I'm trying to wait till the end, and, and, well, I'm trying to get all the feedback. So is, is the goal then uh, develop a long-term plan for alternative education through spaceful district? Is that?
Yes.
That's what we want?
Inclusive of teen parents. I think that also goes with our E C E program, because it's all on the same, we've got a T O S A that's in charge of that childcare teen parent program, to put it right underneath that bullet. Make it pretty.
And then I just want one goal to be, report monthly on progress towards goals.
I want a short-term, long-term goal. Just with that, not, because we can say, oh, in five years, this is, I know it's, it's gonna take a long time, but putting that as a priority instead of that's a long-term goal, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that next year, and then we're gonna look at that next year.
And I do like looking at the year event.
So do you want a goal that says, we're going to expect the superintendent to raise our this, the district's academic expectation?
Are you, are you looking at me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would love that. Yes.
The hook.
We're helping you.
We have an expectation that our superintendent.
This is why I've been asked.
Yeah.
I believe, happen to believe, we're at a really good spot.
Raise the academic expectations about this.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
In fact, I've used Adrian, Adrian told me when I hired you, like, it's time for us to focus the student.
Yeah.
Adrian's like, our, our kids can do this.
Yeah.
And a couple, and I talked to a couple of you offline about, we gotta get the student, like, I've already started off. And that's who I've been, I, I, I was not tasked to win another football state championship.
No.
Football is important. But that's not my primary goal, it's student life.
Absolutely.
And so before, yeah.
And if Adrian said that, you know, he's, he's another engineer, he's pretty smart.
No, he's maybe in the board. He's not.
I know, I'm so angry with them.
Right, so why would we accept anything he said? I did not say one way. Neutrality.
Okay. We heard that you might have to.
Um. So what I have for preliminary goals is develop a long-term plan for the future of alternative education, the K U S B school district bullet points destinations, free page teen parent resourcing online, was it?
Childcare.
Childcare.
Um, did you put teen parents, and did you say prioritize? Or make it a.
Me going in, Kim, and then leave, that you're, they're playing, that's your goal.
Yeah, that's her goal.
That is my goal, and then what, you can send that out with the other goal, and then we can work with it.
That's her plan, and one thing, and then you're gonna find out, is Kim is always going to Thailand or something.
Yeah.
So that's one. Number two.
Brings chocolate back.
Yeah.
Uh, number two, I have a report progress on goals monthly. Uh, and then raise the academic expectations of our district.
That should be number one.
I agree.
So that's number one.
Agreed.
We'll keep Kim's number two.
Yeah.
Highlight number two.
Okay.
So then, what was the other one? And then the other one you're sending out to us, right?
Is reporting back to us.
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, that's right, I forgot, we moved on from this.
Trying to get a couple other things.
Yeah.
Bye, Kim, all right.
All right.
Travel, take your travel.
My plane goes down, keep that.
We, we tried to keep you, it's like, excuse me, you're, you had to go and get on your plane.
If your plane goes down, we'll put it on a plaque.
Yeah.
Don't blame us. Don't put on a plaque and remember good.
Gosh, we got to talk about plaques and something like you.
I would be curious too with the teen parent program. Just my brain, like, I'm young, I like to jump, but. Statistically, how many teen parents do we have that are or would be here or?
We don't know.
I'd want, I would be curious, like, is that still because?
Ten to fifteen.
But is that still because, I mean, we are talking more about contraceptives now. We do have.
They still, they still make a mistake.
I know.
But, but, but actually the statistics.
That's what I'm saying.
I can tell you that from the, from the public health side, that the rate of teenage pregnancy has to be different.
Yeah. I agree. I'm not saying that is not the case, but. Do we need?
A whole program?
I think the value vision piece is important. I think we have to, we can't just rush it. We need to understand. We get twice as much money. It's the economic.
If it's self-approaching, I'm not, I mean, I, I had children very young. I had a daughter who was pregnant in high school. I.
How bad is the.
Not me. I am a hundred percent there, but.
You look at.
It may have been tender fifteen people before and now every four years we have somebody bringing. I just want information. I'm not saying I'm against it, that's not.
Like that.
Yeah.
You know, like the.
Yeah.
So my suggestion is that we put in something like, make a goal for him that he look at the need for additional programming. To handle unique constituencies within our population.
Yeah. I keep that everybody in.
I mean, it is, it is going to be challenging, right? We don't. We don't know. Budgetarily wise, what the sex sessions will look like. I mean, I think the challenge is figuring out what. You know, what, what are we going to have to work with and what are we, you know, financially, what are we going to be able to do with it? I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it looks like it could be fairly challenging, although. I also hear some talk that maybe there'll be some relief inside, so I don't know.
More money than ever, I think.
So, yeah.
Governor's committed at a higher rate than ever before.
So maybe you say, maybe we'll have some resources to play with.
Yeah.
And, and I love it. I do think alternative ed is really important. What makes kids from this area drive all the way to Coquille, to Winter Lakes, when we have a perfectly fine. All ed program right here. So what makes some of those kids go? Maybe, maybe, and maybe that's, can we do?
But we have no. Principal plan on the part of schools to, to not offer the same thing so that.
Yeah, but some kids are just going to graduate. They're, they're not necessarily doing their nail program or their whatever. They're just going to graduate. So why is somebody driving all the way to Coquille? Go to Winter Lakes when they're here, when they could be.
Because.
All ed is worth looking at. That's what I'm trying to say. Sorry.
Um, the part of that reason, Diana, is because we don't have any space for any additional students at destinations right now because of our. Constraints on space.
Okay.
Um. So considering moving the district office and allowing that whole building to be destinations, resource link and.
That's what we were doing. I thought district office is coming.
Yeah, but then it, we had got for. There, the facilities committee looked at it and there were reasons why that wasn't the best option. I think it's going to be something the facilities committee has to look at again this year.
I can tell you that we had a. I guess. Close to a year-long process. Of discussing. What we were going to do as far as moving destinations, district office. And we had five different, all got backdoored and, and changed. And we're back right where we started.
Yeah.
And so we were able, it became, well, let's just get cozier. At Miller Crest, um, for, for a number of reasons, but. Eventually, we have to have a long-term plan for alternate. What do we want it to look like? And let's start making, instead of. And I know that they feel this way, that it always seems that we figure out what everyone else needs. And then we say, what do we have left for alternative ed? Okay, well, let's put them here.
You're on your money there.
Those kids. Need to feel like they are important, uh, because they're. Not all of them, but. Likely a, a number of them are not getting that. Anywhere else. And so they come to school and they're still not getting. Now they're still being treated or feel like they're being treated like, okay, well, I'm just an afterthought.
Thank you for saying that.
Well, you know, it's interesting too, because when I was on that long-term facilities committee. That was the response of a number of. People on the committee. Anytime we were looking at the options that included. Increasing CTE space. It was always, oh, that, that's just CTE. You know, that's, how many kids actually want to learn how to cook? Well, there's a role. Well, not a lot of. That's over.
And I can tell you, we had a cook position open. Constantly at, at Anden Dunes. There, there are jobs right now.
Yeah.
You can go there right now and within five years, you could be the executive chef.
Exactly.
There are, are ways to move up.
There are, so.
Okay, so I like keeping the alternative ed. Uh. As a preliminary goal. Are you guys? Oh, okay. Well, I guess I'm convincing myself.
So I'll, I'll do a little wordsmithing on these before I send them out, but just. To cover what we've got for preliminary goals, I have four. For Justin, first one being raise the academic expectations of our district. Second one, develop a long-term plan for the future of alternative education in the Coos Bay School District and prioritize destinations, free pay. Teen parent resource link online and childcare. And then, oh, sorry, I have five. Uh, fourth one, report progress on goals monthly. And fifth one, investigate the need for additional programs in the district.
Yeah, which I guess, you know, could certainly include, uh, your ideas, uh, around.
Exactly. That's my. You have a feeling he could be presented back on the line.
Yeah, yeah. Justin, I, I know in, in previous administrations, we've had some. Uh, goals around sort of new superintendent roles. Do you feel like any of that would be important at or do you feel comfortable, like, I? I don't know what, if you have a preference on that, but sometimes we have done that in the past.
What roles for?
Well, just certain, uh, goals around. What a new superintendent might do. And I, I, I already know you have put together a plan.
Yeah.
So it may be unnecessary to have in there.
Um, oh, that's actually, I forgot to submit. I've got a, you know, I've got an entry plan.
Right.
It's you guys.
Right.
Yeah, I have that entry. I need to submit that.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, and then you guys can look at it and go. You, you forgot this part. Add this. And then give me some feedback.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, do you.
Is that what you were thinking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, like I said, I, I just didn't know, sometimes it's helpful to have some goal aligned, aligned around the. The entry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and it, it might be more just that we would, uh. Have something in place and that.
Yeah.
Give out feedback for, you know, give up good feedback around it.
Yeah.
And I like, I feel like these goals also wrap in, back into the district goals and the mission. I mean, ideally that's what it's going to happen around. Sort of all times together for me. That's important to me. I have the bow in it all the time.
Yeah, well, it is important.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else, Justin, on your side that you would like?
No. The only thing I was thinking is we, we have two board members who aren't here.
Right.
So I don't know how that.
We didn't hear their. Yeah. That's where we, that's where we get mixed in our meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe we send it out to them and then they just get their feedback and.
On the preliminary goals?
Yeah.
So my plan for that was the same for your board goals. I'll send them out to the full board for feedback and, you know, editing. I'll put them on, on the agenda for our September meeting and that's when we can hash out. You know, any, and if they don't make it two in a row, well, then they had their chance.
I know, I know, too, though you can pull a little deal at the bottom of the page. So we wanted to share this with you. We don't need your input.
Yeah.
Little disclaimer.
Suggestions will not be accepted.
Be true. To be your suggestion.
The last thing I would say, and I need to post it out, is, um, I like to always end a meeting with a launch. It's positive. I just really appreciate the discussion and the discourse. That was. That makes me feel good, that you guys have strong opinions and care. And then I could just, you guys. Agree but disagree and it was respectful and that just feels really good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a good working.
That's the most intense it's gotten for us, actually. That was the most, you know, we've ever.
That's a good discussion. And I think you'll find that. No one here shies away from giving their opinion.
That's good.
But they are respectful and listening to the. We do have one more thing on the agenda and, actually, we have a couple of things on the agenda. But there's this working agreement.
Yes, so that was the last working agreement that I could find. Um. And this, this is again, is something that, that we can bring back, but I, I wanted to get it on here. Um. And I, I don't know, in the past, we have had a. Board and superintendent working agreement. I think it's best practice to have one. I don't. I don't know if this one needs editing.
Is this a boilerplate?
It is.
Pretty much.
This is from the OSBA.
Yeah. I.
So if you just want me to change the date on this one, get a new one and I'll bring it to the board meeting for signatures?
Yep. And it means what.
Yeah.
You could also check, maybe you check with OSBA and see if they have any updates.
Yeah.
Okay.
But other than that, it's. Fairly.
Generic.
Generic and, but it does cover.
Most of the things.
Most of the things that are responsible for.
And, and it keeps, um. It keeps getting, getting real political. This is.
Yes.
So if, if people get out of line as board members, it's an easy way to call them back.
Exactly.
I like that. I think it's good practice as well.
Yeah, so yes.
So, okay, I will check with the OSBA, see if there's any updates. I'll communicate that out to the board via email. And I will bring either this version or the updated version to our board meeting in September. I will hold a vote and then.
Yeah, I would, I would maybe if you were to set it out, I would, uh, just make sure everybody knows, hey, if you have. Suggestion changes, please bring them in. And that's helpful for you, Justin.
Yeah.
We just make sure we have an opportunity to include those, so that.
Okay, and then our last items are action items. Um. So I'm looking for motions, first of all, to designate Kayla Gruff as our special programs director. For titles three and four A S S A E.
I would move that we designate special programs director Kayla Gruff as the district's representative in titles three and four A S S A E for the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twelve seconds.
Just for us, nobody can abstain or.
Yeah, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Okay.
I will move the designated curriculum and instruction director Chad Putton as the district representative for title one A for the twenty-four, twenty-five school. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, number three.
Does aye move that we designate director of early childhood education and coordinator of student services Carly Anker as the district representative for title?
Yeah.
Ten, four, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four and twenty-five.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passed? Okay, is there anything else that? Anyone wants to address today?
So is there a pass on the book?
Yeah.
Monday. Just a, just a formative, just a formative for you. This is some of them.
Perfect.
The only thing I needed to ask, good of the order, uh, how do you guys, in terms of things come up, right? And it's important for me to keep you informed. How do you, you guys want me to send you a quick text message as a group or do you want me to put an email? Obviously not a lot of detail, but I was thinking the other day we had the, um. There was a homicide inside by the school.
Where is that?
Right as you.
By the fire station. Uh, it's a, it's a right across from the new.
Oh, wow. Yeah. And I was thinking, I don't have all your numbers, that, that was on our radar. I was working with principals. We were working with law enforcement. We were putting out messaging. We coordinated already with their PR. All I wanted to say to you guys is, hey, we're on it. We're working through it. To be announced.
Emails are easier for me.
Emails are easier.
Okay.
Um.
I look at routinely.
And.
Okay.
I do appreciate.
Yeah.
Knowing about those things. When things like happened at Sunset. It was nice if we knew about them before we were told by the.
Yeah.
Community about them.
Yeah.
So that we at least didn't look like.
Yeah.
When they're talking to us about things that happened.
Yeah, I want to give you.
If you know things have happened. Assaults, you know, any of those kinds of.
Yeah, ambulance showed up. Lockdown.
Yeah, you've got all the emails.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'll just look up.
Yeah.
I'll get with you next week and make sure you have all your phone numbers and your phone calls.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
It, it typically, if you, for me at least, if you, if you want something specifically responsive from me directly, then, then I would text your call.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But otherwise, email generally is the best.
Yeah, like David does for me. Addie, I sent you something. Please read it.
He's cutting up. If we don't get the response that way, he really needs it. We'll get the text.